We thank you for this esteemed opportunity to breathe life again. In the day and age in which we're living in, we can't even take going to the mall with our families for granted. Can't take a ride in a bicycle in the downtown part of our city for granted. So we thank you now for breath. God, as long as we have breath, I pray that as each of our prayer and beliefs, that we're going to strive to make our area of the earth better than when it was what it was handed to us. God, that's what we want to attempt to do here today. So I pray that you would keep us, that you would guide us, that you would lead us, that everything will be decently and in order, all for your glory and for advancing this city to the next level. In your son Jesus' name, we ask these prayers. Amen. Counselman Nielsen.
Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God and indivisible, with equal justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Councilman. Okay, just want to, before we get started with our other items, want to remind and ask everybody, if you haven't already, please silence your cell phones. Please make sure you're courteous of everybody who is speaking. Make sure we don't have any noises from the audience. Everybody will have an opportunity to speak, and if you do take advantage of that, you'll have no more than three minutes to do it. So Steve, I want you to be ready to have the timer ready to go for us. But again, let's make sure we're courteous of everybody when speaking. Let's respond in a professional tone, all right? Again, silence those cell phones if you have not. At this time, we are up to the reading and approval of the minutes from our April 24, 2023 meeting.
May I make a motion that the minutes of April 24, 2023 be adopted?
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to adopt the minutes as they have been recorded. Comments or questions, Council, about that? Any public comments or questions about that particular motion? All right, CNN, Mr. Stacy, roll call vote.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. All right, awesome. Next, we've got a few, a couple guests and three proclamations. So we're going to try to get through these as quickly as possible, and Steve has us down already with the three minutes. We have led the legendary, the well-known, who needs no introduction, in an Agadish community, and even beyond that, Coach Mike McConaty is here with us today. His office reached out, and he's going to explain to us, of course, I think everybody knows he's running for Senate, to represent Natchitoches in some other areas, and so we want to allow him an opportunity to say that. Now, we will give him a little prerogative. If he happens to need a little bit more than three, we may give him a little grace, but...
Timeouts for one minute.
Okay. All right, Steve, start the clock.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to come by and just wanted to...
I'm sorry, Coach. Please state your first and last name. It's just a thing we do on the record.
I'm sorry. Mike McConaty, went by Coach, Coach Mike, whatever you, I probably called a lot of other things too, but that's okay. Decided after retired April 30 a year ago, Louis Bernard decided not to run, opportunity for someone in this area to run, talk to several people in the area. The district went from five parishes to 10 parishes. It increased. And my concern for this is, and why I chose to run, was because after much prayer with my wife and family, was that if we don't have representation in Natchitoches, then we don't have a voice. And you can say, there's eight rural parishes in this district, if you want to dot count Bossier, which I think Bossier part of it is kind of rural, but you have a rural voice rather than a voice that's from a metropolitan area. If it was just from Shreveport or Bossier City or whatever, those are areas that could all the way go to, but it goes from Rapids all the way up to Bossier and to Caddo. So my reasoning for running was I felt like representation was very, very important for our area. You know, I am committed to serving. I am a listener. I want to always listen to what people have to say, because the problems that each individual is different possibly from mine, but it's different from yours too. But if we don't have the opportunity to express ourselves, that becomes a problem. And I'm just thankful for that. I don't really have any promises. I'm a guy that always believes in over-delivering rather than saying he can do something that he might not be able to do. So that's kind of the nutshell of what I... I got nervous about this time now. You know, normally they come up, but you know, I'm just very excited about it, because here's what I've learned in this short period of time. Everybody has a different look on things than I do. And when you go to Sabine Parish, or you go to Wind Parish, or Rapids Parish, their needs are different than ours in Natchitoches. But I want to be a guy that can take the opportunity to listen to everybody, and I've learned a tremendous amount about truckers. I've learned about our logging industry. I've learned about so many things in this area that are good. And a lot of times, those things aren't put out there, and I would like to be a person that could put that information out there to help us in Natchitoches and the other nine parishes to be able to be as successful and grow our area. And I think that's, that's just what I want to do. I've always been a program builder, from my junior college days to here, and I want to be a program builder as a state senator. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach. If you would state real quick, all right, I think someone wanted to give you a little applause right there. Coach, real quick, Council, any comments, questions from you to Coach? I think everybody pretty much knows him. All right, thanks a lot, Coach. We appreciate that, and I think he's reachable. They've got a Facebook page and all of that, so you've seen the signs up and things like that, okay? All right, the next item, we've got another special guest. This is our second year, and I think we're getting better and better with it. It's the Mayor's Youth Council, who's here, and just, oh, got a couple images. I wasn't aware of those images, okay? All right. Oh, got Councilman Harrington. Is that Councilman Harrington?
That is just...
Oh, that's Eloy. Oh, y'all looking alike, bro. Yeah. All right, so, okay, okay, good, good, good. So look, I want to allow my wife, Steve, to come up, and we'll give her 30 seconds. Now, I'm just joking. She won't need three minutes. But I want her to kind of explain some of the things that have happened this, or, no, no, I think you had somebody, right?
Yeah, I'll just say him.
Okay, you'll let him come up? Okay.
All right, hello, everyone. Tiffany Williams. I have had the pleasure of working with this cohort. This is our second cohort since we brought the Mayor's Youth Council back, and Mason McCart is actually going to come up and talk to you about what we've been up to. So come on, Mason.
All right. And Mason just graduated from St. Mary's High School on yesterday. He's going all the way to Notre Dame. There you go, Steve. Say your first and last name for us, Mason.
Hi, everyone. I'm Mason McCart, and I just wrote a couple words just to describe my experience on the Mayor's Youth Council for these past two years. All right, so last year, I joined the first cohort of the revamped Mayor's Youth Council, not knowing what to quite expect. And within the span of two years, I've created memories that will last a lifetime. And because last year was a test run of sorts, we were able to grow amongst ourselves and make this year the best that we could in terms of activities and just an overall engagement. And for Earth Day this year, we had our first official project together at the Mayor's Youth Council, and we visited Weaver Elementary and provided an assortment of activities and projects for them, for all the students, such as making bird feeders to take home and potting their own plants. And I have to say, the highlight of all of this was seeing the little kids' faces light up with confidence and pride as they compared their creations with their classmates. And then it hit me. The Mayor's Youth Council is not only beneficial to its members, but to the entire city. Because that, what made this year so special is the fact that we were able to see how much of a difference that we can make in our local community. Also, in our time this semester, we were able to create a pitch to the council suggesting the addition of a student member of the school board. This pitch was then reconfigured to be more inclusive by having multiple students up for the position, and so that they will be able to create change effectively. And as I have learned this year, this council is built entirely around teamwork and camaraderie, two very important components as we navigate life. And what I find most special about this council is that each individual makes up a crucial piece of a puzzle, and that is what makes it so unique. Though everyone in this council has a different background, a different home life, and in most cases, a different high school, it is our unique perspective on life that pushes us to enhance our program to its full potential so that we are able to create a maximum impact on the city of Natchitoches and the Natchitoches community as a whole, because that is what matters the most, because we are here for the people. And although my term is reaching its conclusion, I have no doubt that this council will have many prosperous and fruitful years to come, and I have learned that my, many of my positive attributes, I have learned many positive attributes that will be beneficial for the rest of my life, and I'm so thankful to have been part of such an inclusive and amazing organization, and to have been taught by Mayor Ronnie and Ms. Tiffany. Thank you for being such amazing role models for this year, for these past two years. Thank you for your time.
Thanks a lot, Mason. Wonderful job, wonderful job, man.
Do you want to stand up here for questions?
Oh, oh, yeah.
No, I didn't know.
He said, you've got questions. Here, take some...
No, okay, I didn't know. I didn't know.
Okay, all right. Well, and that picture on the right, so the left is what he referenced when they went to the school, did the Earth Day project, and then the right, and I couldn't make it. We were actually in DC at that time, but I heard it was just a great meeting that lasted for three hours, and it's one of those meetings where it was not a dull moment. They were getting this idea over the student member of the board, I think you heard Mason say, which I think is a wonderful idea, apparently, that they do in other communities, where, you know, you have a student person who is a part of the school board in some way, right? Is that basically the idea? And they're able to, you know, give their suggestions and things of that nature that affect children and our youth, who, you know, K through 12. So again, great. My wife has led that effort. It's called the Mayor's Youth Council, but she has, it's all her effort, and I really appreciate the creativity, the ingenuity, and she's done it, really just a great group of students. We don't have just a lot of them, but I think who we have, so we need to have, again, some great ideas. So I really appreciate that. We do have some plaques. We're going to try to disperse this as quickly as we possibly can. Tiff, I'm going to actually have you say their names, all right, and call them up, and we'll do that. And I think you got some medals you'll gift to them later, huh? Okay.
Okay, so, Mason McCart.
All right, come on up. When she calls you, come on up, and we'll have you say up here.
Shawn Moses. Tiffany Nelson. Victoria Wiggins. Maura Francis. Joy Don. Lila Northfield. Caroline Godfrey. Megan Dielar. Weave Hope. And Zion Johnson. I don't know what it is. Yeah, but hold on, next one.
We may have a next one. Sorry, sweetie. But we'll definitely get you.
We just need to draw it around a little bit.
Like, you're already touching on it.
Okay, who's on, who's got the picture? I don't see, I don't see the time zone or whatever, no?
I don't look.
Yeah, the couple you got? All right. Oh, I just see the real piece. So where are you getting, you need to get my...
Yeah.
Trying to get this out?
Yeah. Coin. I think you...
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I put a challenge out to them too. I put a challenge out to y'all. I just, about a month ago, I found my plaque for Mayor's Youth Council. I was on Mayor's Youth Council under Mayor McCullin about 22 years ago. And I left for 10 years, went to school, all that, came back, and then I got elected. So when y'all go out and you do your thing, maybe if you come back, you might be a...
Might be a mayor. You never know.
And I'm sorry if you are.
And thank you so much, parents, because we knew it couldn't have happened without you, your support. A lot of them had many things they were doing. All right, the next item on the agenda, we have some proclamations. The first of three is read by Councilman Nielsen.
Mayor, I deferred to Councilman Harrington to read that.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Mr. Nielsen is, he's sick. He has, yeah.
Yep.
And I was the chairman of the Tourist Commission for several years.
There you go.
All right, this is a proclamation, "Whereas the travel industry fuels every industry and will continue to be an essential part of Natchitoches, Louisiana, economy, development and workforce. And whereas travel is an economic powerhouse for every state and destination across the country, with an economic output of 2.6 trillion in 2022, supporting 14.5 million American jobs. And whereas travel spending supports vibrant and historic communities in Louisiana and across the United States by generating $84 billion in state and local tax revenue in 2022 to support essential services such as education, emergency response, public safety, and more. And whereas travel enables success for all industries, including manufacturing, agriculture, defense, healthcare, and more, by driving sales growth, innovation, education, and operations that move our economy, our nation, and Natchitoches, Louisiana forward. And whereas the travel industry cannot recover without the full return of leisure business and international inbound travelers, increasing travel to and within the United States drives America forward to a more prosperous future. And whereas the travel industry's success will grow Natchitoches, Louisiana's economy and workforce, since prior to the pandemic, small businesses accounted for 60% of leisure and hospitality employment. And whereas travel is an essential industry, we must continue to communicate that growing travel leads to economic growth, benefits businesses, and fosters mutual understanding. And whereas in 2021, Natchitoches Parish produced nearly $80.2 million in visitor spending. And whereas in 2021, Natchitoches visitors contributed $9.25 million in state and local tax revenues. Whereas Natchitoches ranks 19th out of 64 parishes for spending produced by visitors to each parish in Louisiana. And whereas, if not for the state and local taxes paid by tourists in 2021 in Natchitoches Parish, each household would pay $653 more in taxes. And whereas the rebound of travel would drive the rebuilding of the US economy and American workforce. And whereas the future of travel will continue to revive and grow Natchitoches, Louisiana, and the United States, and drive us forward to a more prosperous future. And therefore, I, Natchitoches Mayor Ronnie Williams Jr., does hereby proclaim May 7 through 13, 2023, as National Travel and Tourism Week in Natchitoches, Louisiana, and urge the citizens of our great city to join me in recognizing the critical role this industry plays in Natchitoches, Louisiana." I move to adopt Resolution 35 of 2023.
Second. Motion made. Second, we do have Ms. Arlene Gould here. Is there something to, you might want to say about this? I know this is one of the proclamations that come before us every year. Of course, we understand how important tourism is to our economy here in Natchitoches and has been for a long time, so whatever we could do to support and bring attention to, we certainly want to be a good partner in that. So Ms. Arlene, good to have you again.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Arlene Gould, speaking on behalf of the Natchitoches Parish Tourist Commission and the Natchitoches Convention and Visitors Bureau, and I want to thank you all for recognizing National Travel and Tourism Week here in Natchitoches. As we all know, tourism is very vital to our community. Yesterday, we had the opportunity and the pleasure of kicking off National Travel and Tourism Week. We welcomed three travel charter buses came in from Shreveport. They were the American Rose Society. They were having their national conference in Shreveport at the American Rose Center. So we had three, it started out with one bus. It grew to three full buses and 15 cars following, for a total of 180 visitors yesterday morning. They arrived at 10:30, and they were only going to be here for three hours till 1:30. As we all know, not too many retail shops and restaurants were open on Sundays, but Joe Leo from the Main Street office and myself walked the streets and asked these stores to open. They did agree, some of them, to open from 10 to 2:00. And I just want to say, I ran into one of the retailers this morning, asked them how they did. She said that she earned over $1,700 in three hours. These people were here to specifically shop and eat lunch, and they did. I received three emails today from visitors. Ms. Merry Christmas, Emma Rose Giddens, and I failed to mention, this is a group that we met in Pasadena at the Rose Parade. And so when they found out Emma and I were from Natchitoches, they wanted to come visit, so we invited them. She had, she was recognized in church yesterday morning, so she couldn't be there to welcome them when they arrived, but she certainly went on each of the buses when they loaded up at 1:30, and they were getting ready to pull out. She, I'd given her a bag of Steel Magnolia luggage tags to give to each one of them, and we gave each of the buses a copy of the movie Steel Magnolias, so that when they were leaving us, they were going to Alexandria, and then from Alexandria to Shreveport, we knew they had a two-hour drive, so we gave them the Steel Magnolia movie to watch on the bus. So three people texted me this morning and thanked me for that, so they really enjoyed it. But again, thank you all for supporting our industry and supporting travel and tourism in our community.
Well, Arlene, I think thanks is in order to you and your team, who work with other tourism folks in our city, to make sure, you know, we've got folks, and we, things are going on all the time. I think there was a fishing tournament Randy was telling me about.
We had a very busy week. We had two fish tournaments this week with Bass High School and with College Series. They had 168 boats on Wednesday and Thursday for the College Series, and I think about 180 boats yesterday. They were down at Red River Waterway at the Grandi Corps ramp. So we had a lot going on this week, and, you know, we'd love to see activity and people. We have the pleasure in my office, and I have one of our staff members, Gabby, here with us. We get the pleasure, they come to us in our office and tell us where they're from, and we have seen a multitude of international visitors coming back to Natchitoches, as well as people from all across the United States. So it's definitely picking up. I know that our hotel occupancy taxes are looking really good. So, I mean, even during COVID, we kind of held our own and did better than most communities, not just regionally and statewide, but across this country. Natchitoches had only a single-digit loss in our hotel occupancy losses, you know, collections during COVID. So to have a single-digit loss in your revenue during COVID...
Pretty great.
It's pretty great. No, we're thankful. We're blessed. So, and it does, it takes a village. It takes all of our tourism partners, you know, and our community, to work to help welcome these visitors, to make them feel welcome, and to want to come back.
Right.
Thank you.
Comments, questions, Council?
Keep doing what you're doing.
Thank you. You guys do a great job, and always been there when we need you. Keep us front and center.
Friday at the Sports Hall of Fame, we have Lunch and Learn, so we're going to be having a panel discussion with some of our tourism partners, Carrie Murdoch from the National Park, Janaye Bediscombe as director of the Sports Hall of Fame, Jay Sharfling from Sharpco, and Rebecca Blankenbaker from the Kane River National Heritage Area. So we invite you all to come out at noon to hear, you know, what we're doing, you know, with tourism, and looking forward to that National Park Train Depot Visitor Center thing going on.
Yeah, we're looking forward to that.
Looking forward to the, you know, Sports Hall of Fame induction coming up in July with Eli Manning being inducted along with many others. So we've got a lot of good things, you know, going for us here.
Keep it up, because the numbers, you are doing the right thing, because the numbers keep going up.
Right.
So keep it up. You consistently proved to me that when I was chairman of the Tourist Commission, we made the right decision by making you the director.
Thank you.
So keep up the good work.
Thank you very much.
Okay, look, don't go too far. All right, Council, no other comments or questions? All right, Mr. Stacy, roll call vote.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. All right, Councilman Harrington and I get this picture. You get that picture. Thought you were coming to too.
Just a little bit down there. So you're right.
Center. Are we centering that way?
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Okay, next item on the agenda is another proclamation, number 36 of 2023, read by Councilwoman Alora Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. It's Resolution 036 of 2023. It's a proclamation declaring May 20, 2023, as Kids to Parks Day in the city of Natchitoches, Louisiana. Whereas May 20, 2023, is the 12th Kids to Parks Day, organized and launched by the National Park Trust, held annually on the third Saturday of May. And whereas Kids to Parks Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit America's parks, public lands, and waters. And whereas, we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat the issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, hypertension, and hypercholesterolemia. And whereas, Kids to Parks Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and the outdoors. And whereas, Kids to Parks Day will recognize the importance of recreating responsibly while enjoying the benefits of the outdoors. And now, therefore, I, Ronnie Williams Jr., Mayor, and the Natchitoches City Council, do hereby proclaim May 20, 2023, as Kids to Parks Day in Natchitoches, and urge residents of Natchitoches to make time on May 20, 2023, to take children in their lives to a neighborhood, state, or national park. And signed by Mayor Ronnie Williams Jr., and Mayor, I move that Resolution number 036 of 2023 be adopted.
Motion made and seconded. Of course, we always try to improve where we came, and you see some different things at City Park going on right now, and that's, that's going to come to fruition and everything. We do have Mrs. Diane Dodd here with us today to receive this, and just sort of a way to, we know she's really active in our rec department. I don't know if you have any comments. We just asked you today, so I don't know if there's anything you might want to say. If not, that's fine. If you want to, that's fine, too.
I'm excited.
Okay, all right, great. Steve, we'll get you to cue the clock for us. And please, state your first and last name.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Diane Dodd, and I moved to Natchitoches in 2017. And the moment I moved here, I got very involved in our sports here, parks and rec. And I tell you, Mr. Small, I tell you, I coached his son, and some of the other people here, if you have a kid that's under 14, I probably coached your son or daughter as well. So the reason why I would assume that Kevin called me this morning while I was doing my lawn is because I am involved, and I am very passionate about what I do, and I, you know, I grew up in south-central Los Angeles, and I went to parks. I got to go to the park and rec system, played sports, went to college, won a national championship, became a police officer, moved here, love Natchitoches. Obviously, my family's Creole. We all have our roots here, and we love it here, and I retired here, and I guess that the main reason I want the most to say is that I will continue to do what I do because I have a passion for it. It's more than just that I'm volunteering as a parent, because my son is 12. I have a calling for this, is how I feel. This is my calling, and I really want everybody to know that, keep your kids involved in the parks, because if they're not involved in the parks, that's idle time, and that's when they get involved in things we don't want them to get involved in. This is my calling, and I really want everybody to know that keep your kids involved in the parks, because if they're not involved in the parks, that's idle time, and that's when they get involved in things we don't want them to get involved in. So, that's really all I have to say, and thank you for allowing me to speak.
No, we're glad you accepted, and I know you're right, Kevin. You know, we're always looking for coaches, and then when we find, you know, GMs like Mrs. Dodd, it just, you know, really is impactful to us, so we appreciate you. And so, Kevin immediately thought about you when I asked him to help me thank somebody we can present this proclamation to. So, council, I don't know if you have any comments or questions or anything?
No, just thank you because you're right. These kids need to be involved in something positive. Appreciate that.
All right, thank you.
Yep, well, we'll get a picture with you.
Come on, get a picture.
But before we do that, we do have a motion and second, right? Okay, and no more comments or questions for council? All right, can we do roll call vote? Is that all right?
Nielsen?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. All right, Mrs. Dodd, come forth. Come on, Kevin. Come on, man. Yeah, can I get a little? The next item on the agenda is our third and final proclamation of the evening. It's read by Councilman PT.
Thank you, Mayor. Proclamation declaring May 2023 as Mental Health Awareness Month in the City of Nagadish. Whereas, mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being. Whereas, all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their life, and one in four of all Americans require treatment at some point for mental health. Whereas, prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions. And whereas, there is a strong body of research that supports specific tools that all Americans can use to better handle challenges and protect their health and well-being. Whereas, real recovery from mental illness requires community action, understanding, and teamwork, and if possible, due to improved science, increased community support, and reduced stigma and stereotypes. But significant barriers still remain. Whereas, each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen share the burden of mental health problems and has the responsibility to promote mental health awareness and support prevention efforts. Therefore, I, Mayor Ronnie Williams, Jr., do hereby proclaim May 2023 as Mental Health Awareness Month in the City of Nagadish. I so move that we adopt Resolution Number 038.
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded. And we started recognizing last year, mental health awareness. And I think there's a lot more attention put on mental health awareness now in the media and things like that. But there are folks like Winter Haven, we got Pastor Brian Small, Brian Small here with us. He's associated with Winter Haven Counseling Agency. And Mr. Small, I don't know if there's something you might want to say about mental health very briefly, but I really appreciate you for accepting this proclamation and being here tonight as we try to certainly put more emphasis on this, you know, this area in our society. Something you'd like to say? And please state your first and last name before your remarks, sir.
Pastor, Pastor Brian Small, CEO of Winter Haven Professional Counseling. Y'all excuse me if I say amen or can I get a witness, it's real close to Sunday. But I just want to share that with you all, that our and your mental health is important. It's often looked over, but we as human beings are made up as what I like to call three-part beings with mind, body, and soul. We take care of our soul through our religious practices. We take care of our bodies through our physical activities, but it's often overlooked is our mind. The mind controls everything. But sometimes the mind can get overwhelmed and the mind can crack. Some of us, as I heard Councilman PT state, I think he said a fourth of people have dealt with some type of mental issue and had to seek help. Too often, we are ashamed of our mental issues, and we're ashamed to seek help because we are sometimes stigmatized, called crazy, and so forth. But regardless of what some individual may say about you, it is important. The world we live in is beginning to be filled with mass shootings and murders and such. And when they dig down to the root cause of the problem, you'll find that somebody was suffering from a mental illness that they either refused to talk to somebody about or were too ashamed to reveal. This being Mental Health Awareness Month, it should be a year because it's all the time. It's always going on. So, if you come across somebody who's dealing with an issue, who seems overwhelmed, first of all, talk to them, but refer them to different agencies. Here in Nagadish, we have the Nagadish Mental Health Clinic located on Kaiser. Our office, Winter Haven Professional Counseling, is on Texas Street. But whatever you have to do, do your best to deal with what you have going on. And mental illness is not just for grown people, but there are teenagers, there are small kids that deal with, that deal with mental issues. There's a variety of treatments. Some of us believe in medication. Some of us believe in, you know, therapy and counseling. But whatever it is, take it serious because, look, it doesn't care about race, it doesn't care about gender, it can affect each and every one of us. So, I just want you to be aware, look for the signs, look for the symptoms, get on the internet, Google it if you have to, but whatever it takes, find out what it is. And the best thing that I can recommend is get treatment as, excuse me, as soon as possible. Thank you for having me today.
Thanks a lot, Pastor Small. We really appreciate you coming today to say that. I think that's really helpful and certainly want my office to work with people like Pastor Small and others as we think about it this month. And you're right, it's not, shouldn't just be a month, but certainly as we are trying to get people's focus out there, you know, what are some of the signs to look for if somebody might be having a mental health crisis and things like that? So, really appreciate not only the work you do, but being here today. I don't know, council, if you've got any comments or questions about it? Okay, I think we did have a, we had a motion and a second? All right, okay. At this point, we will, Ms. Stacey, roll call vote.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes.
All right, come on up, Pastor Small. We have that proclamation. Councilman PT and I are going to take with you, okay? All right, that's the end of our proclamations. Now, there's a planning and zoning item for introduction here today, and that's Ordinance Number 29 of 2023, read by Councilman Harrington.
This is Ordinance 29 of 2023. It's an ordinance amending Ordinance 64 of 2021 by changing zoning classifications of property described as follows. This is 104 Mill Street. The Planning Commission of the City of Nagadish, State of Louisiana has recommended at their meeting of May 2, 2023, that the application of James K. Dortland to rezone the property described above from B3 commercial to B3 commercial with additional BA zoning for multi-purpose venue restaurant, 104 Mill Street, be approved. This is for introduction only.
Okay, this did go to planning and zoning last week. I think I can animate support. We've got, I know Mr. Kelly Dortland here. Will you mind coming forward and telling us what kind of some of the things that are going on? Again, this is just introduced on today. Council members may have some questions, but please state your first and last name, and Steve's going to hit the clock after you do that.
Good evening. My name is James Dortland. Me and my wife purchased the L.A. Johnson Building last year. We have been, you know, just to kind of tell you a little story about what we're doing there is, my wife is a wedding planner, and she always wanted a venue. And I'm kind of from the outside of, live on the outer edges of Nagadish parish, and she most definitely did not want it there. So, when I'm from Nagadish, I've been to that building about 50 years ago. And I know a lot of folks that's worked there over the years, and the building seemed to be uninhabited and didn't know what they were going to do with it, but they put it for sale, and we bought it to make a venue out of it. She loves to do weddings and stuff, and we're sure that, I'm sure that we'll also offer more things there. But it is a beautiful building. Don't want to see it, anything go to waste on it. We're going to kind of keep it as is, but renovate the inside of it to entertain several different types of functions.
That's great.
Okay, all right. Council, I don't know if you have any questions or anything like that for Mr. Dortland. Again, this is just introduced here today. It'll be voted on in our next meeting on the 22nd?
Twenty-fourth, I think, 24th.
What's today?
Is it 22nd?
Wait, hold on, today's the eighth?
Twenty-fourth, I think, is the next meeting.
The eighth?
Eighth. 22nd, right?
Yes.
22nd, that's correct.
Okay, anything for Mr. Dortland? You good? All right, thanks a lot, Mr. Dortland, and we'll see you in just a couple of weeks, all right? I think he's making some really good progress. They're making some really good progress there.
That's great.
All righty. Next item on the agenda is a motion to take Ordinance Number 24 of 2023 from the table.
May I make a motion that we take Ordinance Number 24, 2023, from the table?
I second.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded. All right, comments or questions, council? Any public comments or questions here? All right, CNN, Mr. Stacey, roll call vote.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda, I'm sorry, now, since it's taken from the table, we have Ordinance Number 24 of 2023, Councilman Nielsen.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance Number 24 of 2023 is an ordinance adopting the budget for the City of Nagadish for the fiscal year June 1, 2023 through May 31, 2024. Whereas, the fiscal year of the City of Nagadish is from June 1 through May 31 of each year. And whereas, a budget has been prepared by Finance Director Clarissa Brown-Smith and has been submitted by Mayor Ronnie Williams, Jr. to the City Council for review and consideration. Now, therefore, be it ordained that the Nagadish City Council does hereby adopt the budget for the fiscal year June 1, 2023 through May 31, 2024. General fund at $20,590,175. Proprietary fund utility is $49,038,200. Special and capital project fund is $26,908,76. Be it further ordained in accordance with LRS 391305, the following specifies the mayor authority to make budgetary amendments without approval of the governing authority, as well as those powers reserved solely to the governing authority. And the Home Rule Charter of the City of Nagadish states in part, at any time during the fiscal year, the mayor may transfer part or all of any unencumbered appropriation balance among programs within a department, office, or agency. Upon written request by the mayor, the council may be
made by ordinance.
From one department, office, or agency to another, supplemental emergency and reductions of appropriations must be submitted to the council for approval by Ordinance Section 5.05A through C. This ordinance was introduced on April 10, 2023, and published in The Times on April 13. And I move to adopt Ordinance Number 24 of 2023.
I second.
Motion made and seconded to adopt the budget. We had our budget hearing, this is the second one we've had, obviously. And we just really went through the pamphlet again. It's pretty much the same as it was the last time. And, yeah, and I think in our last meeting on the 24th, there were some comments that they're doing some things differently, and we certainly could get to that. But, you know, I think somebody mentioned doing a meeting outside of this structure. And like I've said, we did it a couple of years ago, but we didn't do it this year. But we have started providing these pamphlets, which just gives you, you know, just that high-level view. No way you can include, you can take, what is it, 300-some-odd pages? Yeah, 200, 200-plus, and put it down into this pamphlet. But just wanted to give you the high things, where we are in terms of taxes, the utility fund, you know, sales taxes that are coming in, how each one of the departments is funded, what we have for ARPA, what we have for our capital IRA projects, you know, that are coming up, things that we are trying to get accomplished in terms of, mostly in terms of infrastructure. A lot of that is going to be, you know, through Utility Department and things of that nature. So, have it up here, provided it. I think we have some more copies out there. So, again, just wanted that opportunity. We also, because I know a point of contention was, you know, the grant situation, grants writing situation locally and what was proposed in the budget. So, we kind of just went through that, you know, earlier in the meeting. And Steve, get back to that just real quick. I won't go over all those details like we did earlier, but just a very high-level view of, you know, some of that and just cover some of that. So, yeah, and again, I won't go over all these slides because we actually did it, and the hearing was recorded, so we actually did it there. Just kind of, you know, flip through that, Steve. Just, you know, just stating here that, you know, there's a cost associated with when you win. But the whole point is that, you know, it's better to pay $250,000 fee because you're getting a $2 million value, right? So, that's kind of a no-brainer. But this is, you know, it's not, it's not cheap to do it, and there's a lot of work into it, and you got to make sure you, you know, as I mentioned earlier, not only write the grant, win the grant, but keep the grant, and that takes work. Frank McGee, I don't have a picture of Thomas, but I just, you know, again, for the grant he's got for us, 1.6 ongoing work. I mean, we're just working, waiting on things to come in. That's been at a standstill, but we know there's a cost. That's 45.5 to manage that 1.6 million-dollar grant. All right, and then I share with you very quickly, hit the next one, Steve. Don't want to necessarily go, just hit these kind of quick. We share with you 17.2 million a grant, the $5 million grant, the 1.6 million dollar. You know, this is all in just about two years, not even fully two years, all right? So, much that we have been doing and trying to accomplish off of the benefit of the City of Nagadish. As I mentioned earlier in the hearing, not all of our swings are home runs. Not all of them are, we don't get on base all the time. But I tell you what, our job is to swing for you, swing in every capacity that we possibly can. So, that's what we do for grants, and that's what we try to do for these other areas. You know, we're swinging at things. We're trying to, you know, be successful and things of that nature. And I think there's just one more there. And so, I just shared with the council a couple of emails. That's what these other slides are. You can stay right there, Steve, but that's what those other slides are really talking about. Share with them information from Bruce Johansson. He's expert in this type of stuff. I'm not, so, again, I think all of the council members have that. And, yeah, that's basically it. So, I don't know, council, if you've got any comments or questions at this point. That's really a quick rehash of those who did not make it to the public hearing meeting earlier. But obviously, we're always on an open book. If there's something, Clarissa, schedule an appointment with her to talk about anything at any time. Don't really know what you're going to have, and this is just not the council. It's kind of my thing in the classroom. You know, the teacher will always say, are there any questions? Because again, you don't know what somebody might be thinking, right? So, you know, that's why you have to say, hey, come see us if there is something that you got.
Mayor, I don't want to speak for anybody else, but part of the reason for passing this is because we're up against a June 1 deadline, and if we delay, it throws us, it's no good information. And if we delay, it throws us, it's no good information. Throws us into this year's budget and it just is going to be very difficult to dig out of that. There is one bone of contention with the, the council on the one salary item. I would respectfully ask that you go back and revisit that. There were part-time numbers that I sent in that did not show up on this and, you know, we're, my concern partially is that you're probably to the level you need full-time and that matches those numbers. Part-time, if you got this much on the books, that's gonna be kind of hard to do. And you're trying to get a premium salary for a part-time position. So that's, that's kind of where I'm at.
Hey, let's make sure we're not talking from the floor. That's just for everybody. One microphone is what I used to say, so we just, uh, have that one microphone going. All right, uh, Councilman Nielsen, got you? Any other of the council before we open it up to the public?
I agree with Dale. I, I was gonna say that, but thank you for saying it, Dale. And I know you have the authority, uh, to make changes to the budget. But also we as council, we are stewards over the taxpayers' money. So we are in a position to make sure that the monies are spent wisely and, uh, in the best way possible. And again, we, we're not knocking any one person or anything like that. It's just the, 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 the way it's being done, uh, we don't, I don't think it was done properly. We weren't aware of some things. And so I, I just feel that it's a, a big amount for a part-time position. And as Councilman Nielsen alluded to earlier, uh, maybe looking at doing something full-time basis. We don't know how many hours are being worked, um, the number of, if they're clocking in, clocking, clocking out. And so all of these things I think need to be taken into consideration. Again, we've done some wonderful things on getting the grants, but I just think in, in all fairness, we need to look at, uh, maybe a fair amount for some, uh, someone on a part-time level other than a full-time salary for a part-time work. That's the only thing I'm, that's my only concern.
Well, I, only point I'll make, uh, and I take, I take what you got, the only point I'll make is you, full-time, that comes with benefits. So you may look at, for instance, help me out, Clarissa.
It's about a thirty, thirty percent markup.
So if it's seventy thousand, what's that total cost to the city?
Um, almost close to a hundred.
So, see, I, so when you say full-time, again, you are talking about the benefits of. And the benefits, kind of name some of, some of those so we know what they are.
Well, retirement.
Your health insurance, yeah.
Yeah, retirement benefits, health benefits, vision, dental, um, life insurance, um, all are partially paid by the, um, city. So anytime that you move a person from part-time to full-time, you look at about a thirty percent markup on just total cost. Um, not something that just shows up on their, uh, base salary, but overall cost of an employee.
As just kind of generally speaking, that's why some previous administrations have carried the part-timers because you do save on the benefits and things like that, which is why you do that.
And I know you're adamant about wanting this to pass and so.
Okay.
Pass.
All right. Uh, any other counsel?
Um, my big concern obviously is if we do not pass this, it's gonna affect all the pay increases that we very diligently worked for.
Yeah.
That we stuck our necks out for, for police, for fire, for all other city employees. And in fact, we had several, several meetings regarding their pay. We had, um, that consultant come in, what's, what's the name? I can't remember the group now.
Johansson, Johansson Group.
Thank you. Come in and met with us several times regarding their pay and, you know, end up nickel and diming every increase that we wanted to give them. And however, for this part-time position, not one of us on the council had any knowledge of it, of a sixty-nine percent increase. No one spoke to us about it. We never had a single meeting about it, yet we were nickel and diming police and fire increase. And that, we learned about it when we received the budget and going through the budget and we came across it. That's the only way we knew about it. And so that, it's, it, it, it's, we're holding the pay increases that we fought for hostage by not voting for this because of one that we had no, no input or knowledge of. And that, that doesn't sit well with me. That, that's not how things should be done. However, I'm not one to then not support the ones we fought for, for one. I'm just saying, I don't like it. I don't think it was done right. Especially for a part-time position, uh, for that high of an increase, we should have been brought in and had some sort of knowledge of it. I'll vote to pass the budget for every, for all other positions, but in protest.
Fair point, Councilman Heritage, and to your point on, um, you know, I guess it could be taken that, uh, the suggestion is that I'm trying to hide something. It's, it's, it's a big budget, no doubt. That's why I was saying that teacher metaphor. The teacher goes through the lesson and presents everything and says, are there any questions? Because I don't know what you gonna, what's gonna be your, your sticking point. For me, this is a no-brainer. It's a no-brainer because of the results. It's a no-brainer because we're looking at twenty-five million. I'm not saying, uh, our local grants writer is responsible for the entire twenty-five million. Again, I give credit where credit is due. The one point six, I said, and four point, and four eighty goes, that goes to Schuler's credit. It goes to Thomas McGee credit, all right? So, but again, these things have to be managed and there's a massive, there's a lot of money at that cost and this is kind of built in. I'm not saying we won't need managers ever again. We've won a lot more than a lot of other communities have won. And, uh, again, you may see it and say, hey, he should have brought this out. But my perspective is this is just a no-brainer based on the sheer results. These are real numbers. These are real press releases that we got from DOT, you're getting from NEA, you're getting from state agencies. So when you look at the amount of money that we've won, it, it, it's very, very small, what we're talking about. I didn't think it would be an argument, to be quite honest, you know? Councilman PT?
Yeah, ma'am, I think that it was just very important to try to get the ones that was like on the bottom levels, like Public Works, their department, of course, fire and police to try to go ahead and get them up. So I'm just glad to see that we finally got the ball moving forward on that end. Uh, as far as from the, the part-time position, it's just kind of hard for us to, you know, know the scope of what the work is. And I, I think that's just listening to the council members, uh, one asked about hours, you know, we don't, you know, we don't know that. There's nothing that we.
I, I can produce, I can produce.
I was just glad to get the information from, you know, Ms. Clarissa concerning the, uh, the study that was done, you know, to know where we are as far as like the scope of work, you know, part-time, full-time, as to give us an idea of where we at. But, you know, clearly, uh, as you mentioned, with the, the grants that we are, uh, getting that's coming, the twenty-five million, I think that we are heading in the right direction as far as, you know, getting, getting those grants, getting awarded those grants. But, uh, I'm just glad and seeing that we finally are moving the ball forward in that end.
Okay. Steve, you ready? Good. Any, uh, public comments or questions at this time? And please state your first and last name. And Steve's gonna get us, after they state the first and last name.
Hello, my name is Precious Barbara. First of all, I want to commend, uh, Dale Nissan, uh, Betty Sawyer Smith, Harrington, and PT. I want to thank you for looking at this budget with all eyes. I want you to know that we, the people, see your heart. This will not fall on you. I promise you that because we are understanding what you're saying. And the reason why I thank you for moving in the actions that you're moving is because right now, even State Representative Kenneth Cox is at the state level fighting for increase of minimum wage in this whole state. And he is coming against people who are elected officials who are getting pay raises and people who in the state capital are getting pay raises while the people can't even get minimum wage up to ten dollars an hour. So when you say what you said, we, the people, know that you will not be held accountable for this matter. But those who chose to be discreet, hide this private, and did not give you the information that you needed on time to make the proper decisions, we will make sure that they will be held accountable for this decision. And we thank you as our city councilman and city councilwoman for making the right decision because once again, we are fighting to get minimum wage increase across this state. And we cannot get it, but we're seeing people on state level getting raises. Teachers are getting denied pay increases. But you have people that are on state levels and local levels that want increases in raises. So that shows me you don't care nothing about the people that put you in office because you are denying those who are lower levels, those who are mostly in poverty. Just years ago, Natchitoches ranked sixth, sixth, sixth in the nation as one of the poorest cities in America. Some of you may not, cannot feel it because your monies are good, but we, the people, feel it every day. So I thank you again to my councilmen and my councilwoman. You will not be held accountable for this decision. We thank you. We, the people, see. And as watchmen, we will make sure that others know. Thank you.
And I would just say to the record as Mr. Sias is coming, and I'm gonna pronounce it Sias, um, is that, um, I will say that in, all the increases that are gonna happen here on the local level do not involve local officials, do not involve the mayor of the council, so we didn't vote ourselves a raise. Just wanted to, no, I just, I'm just stating for the record, um.
I beg to differ, Mayor. It's, we have an exposure, but yeah, increases in all of the departments, finance, may, it's, that's there, so. But I'm just want to be discreet.
My point, hey, uh, I'm gonna ask you to be dismissed, Precious, if you keep on, it's like your third time talking from the floor. Well, I'm sorry, I didn't, I, I, I recognize that too. Hi. I'm not arguing with you.
All right.
Hey, uh, my point is I'm saying is these raises do not include the six people up here. That's, that's all I'm saying.
Not us.
That's all my point. All right. Uh, Mr. Sias and Steve, there you go.
Yes, um, Carl Sias, it's a lumber legger to most of you all that know what I'm talking about. Um, when I was coming up as a boy here in this town here, I picked cotton. I hold cotton. I worked in the field. I went pick pecans and everything else. The work that I did, I got paid for it if it took all day long. My thing of it is, we have a lot of city employees. Working part-time, you get part-time work. You're not getting a full day's work, working people part-time. I don't know what is the budget for the city or the, uh, street and drainage department. Uh, part of the, the city is in bad shape, lack of employees. Uh, the city need help. If you're gonna give out raises to certain people, make sure that it's done fairly across the board. Not just, uh, because this person, half of the grants on this diagram up here. If y'all had to fill out the paper, they probably would have gave it to you anyway because the federal government gave out a lot of, uh, free money and everything else. So it didn't take a lot of scientists to develop, uh, grants. And you paying the grant writer right at seven hundred fifty, uh, seven hundred fifty thousand or seven hundred fifty dollars a month, um, end up being right at eighty-two or ninety-seven thousand dollars a year. And you paying another person a higher rank salary. And you got employers here who have families that is underpaid. And if you're gonna look at everybody being equal to the city and get quality workers and everything, you got to give quality skill of pay.
Thank you, Mr. Sias, for your comments. And I, I don't know if you were here for all of the hearing, but one thing we stated, we did when I came on, and I give credit to the department heads for really advocating, we did have folks especially working out in the sun. So we got everybody up above that minimum wage standard, way above it. I mean, they were above it already, but got them to ten dollars at least. And so I think we pretty much have that standard throughout the city, but I appreciate your comments. All right, yeah, anybody else at this time? All right, Mr., please state your first and last name.
Right, a three-minute thing.
Okay.
I want to thank everybody, uh, that I've talked to, some of you I talked to on the city council.
State's first and last name, please.
Victor Cofield, I'm sorry, uh, Henry O'Fliffer Foundation. Um, I've got a friend that's on our board who's a retired banker and he got his favorite saying, we need to always have transparency. So this, uh, project that we have with the Henry O'Fliffer Foundation is that the foundation, the very foundation of addressing poverty. And I think, uh, that it is something that ought to be highlighted with some specificity. So I'm grateful that the mayor made written commitment of the city to support the, our grant for sixty-nine thousand dollars. And we don't want it under the rug. We want it in the light. And we ask you to pass that budget because he told me it's absorbed in the budget. Now, we are not a government agency like, uh, what is that called? The nine-one-one center? We're a private, nonprofit corporation and when we receive grants, we administer those grants. And we don't have to invoice people, Mayor. And so I would ask that we be granted with the integrity that all the other agencies that are sponsoring us with money is doing. And so please support the budget and give Henry O'Fliffer Foundation a chance to do some things for this city that haven't been done in a while in terms of homeownership and enriching poor people, giving them a chance to pull up the ladder. When you buy a home, that's an investment. These three homes we are building guarantee sixty-three thousand dollars in equity and down payment assistance for poor people. And all they have to do is maintain that house for ten years. They can't flip it. It's designed to be a continuation process. And once we get certified, we'll be qualified for a one point five million dollar grant under the CHAPS program, eight hundred thousand under another, and seven hundred fifty thousand dollars from the Federal Homeland Bank for starters. So I've been doing a lot of grant writing and I know what it takes to write grants. And I've worked very hard for this and I thank you for your support. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments, Mr. Cofield. I would just say that every group we work with, whether it's NEDA and some other groups, it may be Kane River Heritage, does an invoice process, so that's not unique to anybody, uh, uh, with that, so. Yeah, so, uh, he has an affordable housing initiative. And, um, basically you have to have a, a Shoto set up, a community housing development organization. It's something I verify with, uh, Executive Director, uh, Hollins of the Louisiana Housing Corporation. So, but we do have a certain process by which we work.
I just want to say, I know, um, I've received communication that the mayor does support your organization and I support her highly. But where is it in the budget? Where was it listed in the budget that the council is supporting this? What line item would that have been? And on another night, before, before you answer that, I just want to say, we, we don't want to not pass the budget because we were given the impression when we did the utility increase that, um, and putting that burden on taxpayers that the monies will be going toward, uh, workers, firemen, police to increase their pay. Fifteen, ten dollars an hour, and then here, part-time, thirty dollars an hour for part-time work. When these people getting ten dollars, uh, fifteen and seventeen dollars an hour. But my thing is, um, we don't want to sit here and say that we don't want to pass the budget because we don't want to put a hardship on the end of these workers who are working, those who are, will be getting a, a raise. So we, we want to, but we want to make sure people understand what's going, transparency is very important. And so, uh, if you could answer my question with this, with the Henry O'Fliffer, where would it be in the budget for the council to support, uh, donating to that?
Yes, ma'am, so.
Cause he's asking us to pass it.
Okay, yes, ma'am. So that is part of.
Line item.
Ma'am?
What about, what about in the budget on here? Where would be listed?
She's trying to explain it, okay?
So that, that is one of the items that is on the mayor's, um, initiative list. And, um, because of our constraints, uh, we could not put it on a line item. What we do is we review it, you know, we have to bring all budget amendments to the council for any type of changes. So that it, that will be honored if it is feasible within our budget. You know, every, the budget is pretty much a projection. So if, uh, the projection shows favorable to, um, our operations, then that's something that we can come back and make an amendment to approve. That is just one of the line items that are listed on the mayor's initiative list. Each year, the mayor has. Each year, the mayor has, um, a list of things that he would like to, uh, do, uh, organizations that he would like to support. Some we can put line items specific, uh, in the budget just based on monies that are available. And some we are not able to, and we can always go back to review, um, and bring to the council for approval.
Well, that's my question, apparently, Mr. Colfield is here tonight. Is it on the budget for us, for approval tonight in the mayor's budget? That's my question, it's not. Okay.
It's not listed as a line item, but Mr. Colfield is asking that we, uh, that the mayor has committed his support to his organization and his endeavors. And when it comes to the budget, that would be, if it's budget feasible, we would have to come back to the budget, I mean, to the council to amend that budget to include it.
But why wasn't included in this budget?
Because we couldn't feasibly include it. So that means that we didn't have monies that we can directly appropriate to that. So it isn't, it's not a.
But you could appropriate it part-time.
No, ma'am, I mean, that is, that is based on salaries and, um, other analysis and professionals that are already in place.
With the pageant of the budget, we could potentially absorb it, is what we basically, uh, discussed. And I share that with Mr. Colfield, too.
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
I just wanted to ask this because there are some things with what name, uh, so.
Need you to talk into the microphone?
I talk pretty loud.
There's still a microphone.
Anyway, uh, we, we have a letter that says the Naq City, City of Nagades Stand Committee to submit to the approval of the city council. That's what it says. All right, so when you're dealing with business and government stuff, you deal with specificity. There's a lawyer over there, I know him well. Uh, so we're looking for the same clarity we get from everybody else. The Community Improvement Foundation has agreed to put up sixty-nine thousand dollars subject to approval by the mayor and the city council. So if the city council doesn't vote for it, the promise of the city council involvement is obviated.
Well, I, I, I just guess it goes like this. You get so many things that everybody wanna do. You just got a limited amount of money. And so you say, you know, you, this is the absorb process. I've got some other things, do you remember a couple of other things we said we were gonna absorb?
Well, there was, um, excuse me, my voice cracking now. Um, those are some projects that you had listed. Um, we had some, uh, grant matches, um, that would only be, um, feasible if our, our, um, operational budget, you know, lent that. Um, we had to reduce your, uh, road, um, your, your street, uh, amount.
Let me say that, that was one-point-three started out, got cut by six-hundred-and-fifty thousand.
Yes, sir. And, um, just in hopes that we could possibly maybe absorb, um, some additional costs as the year goes on. We always do evaluations of the budget and where we are as far as revenue and expenses. Budget is projections, but sometimes you do have to wait until you get within the year to see what actual revenues and expenses are coming across, how rapid they are, and what we see ourselves, um, as far as good standing in our, um, revenues and expenses. So some things do have to be reviewed at a later date. Um, that's like any type of wish list, I, I hope that I could do everything. We work with the directors as well on different initiatives, different, uh, capital purchases and things of that nature. Everybody wasn't able to be honored in the actual budget as being put in a line item. But they were left on a list to say that if we are financially feasible at whatever point in the year, that we will review that for, um, additional consideration.
Thank you. I'm thinking Mr. Colfield is probably thinking, if we approve this budget, you're gonna be funded this money.
Yeah.
That's what you're thinking.
That's exactly.
I'm hearing from you, okay.
It's gonna have to come back before.
Come back before, it will not be in the.
Okay, we have a time limit, and the mayor has known this since last year when I came to you. All right, he talked to Mr. Hollis about four, five times, trying to check everything I told him about, okay? So we have three-hundred-and-forty-two thousand dollar line of credit already established by Sabine State Bank. Two-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand dollars already committed by Louisiana Housing Corporation. And our certification happens in June. In June, we have to have something that says we will be capable of paying a salary.
You won't.
And therefore, it can't be speculative.
Thank you, Mr. Colfield, we appreciate that, but that's just, that's not the only thing.
So what I need to know tonight before I go home, because I'm a member of this city. And I have an opinion, and there are a lot of people that listen to me in Nagades. And I wanna know what I'm gonna tell you about affordable housing, housing counseling, it's a venture for poverty, credit counseling. I wanna know, because I've been talking to people, and I've got forty people online waiting for me to certify them as first-time home buyers. And an opportunity to get a subsidized house for the first time in their lives in Nagades. And the only opportunity they'll ever get is somebody subsidizing their houses. And so we don't.
I understand how you feel, Mr. Colfield, we can't, we can't give you all of the time tonight, you've had three minutes. We can't give you all of the time, it, it's just where it is in the budget.
What is the?
It's, it's an, it's one of those things that are gonna be absorbed if we, if we could do it.
Okay. I hear, you said we can do.
I said, if we, like she said.
All right, so.
And I, I just don't think it's wise to be hostile when people are actually trying to help you.
Right, I'm not trying to be hostile.
Well, you're sure.
I'm trying to be forceful and vocal about my point of view.
You have money, it, it's just, it's all math, that's all, it's nothing to get you, it's math. You have a certain amount of money, you have your quest away up here. Hold on, sir, hold on, sir. Hold on. Sir?
Mr. Colfield.
You have a certain amount of money, you have all these wants and needs, and you just have a certain amount of money. There's nothing flagrant about that. I mentioned the street budget that I submitted got cut in half, I wasn't happy about that. But that's just math, that's all it is.
Yeah, well, math is neglecting the need of the poor people in Nagades, that's what I'm talking about.
Sir, and that's not, that's not where we are, but.
You said it's in the budget, it's gonna be absorbed, that's what you told me on the phone, you said not if. You know, so I don't know exactly what to do.
But I, I, well, I think during the.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
It's not the council's fault, I just wanna let you know that.
Yeah, okay, any other comments tonight? All right, thank you, Mrs. Stacy, uh, roll call vote.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
P T.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is also an ordinance for final, it's read by Councilwoman Elarge Smith.
Okay, this ordinance number zero-two-five of two thousand and twenty-three for final, which is an ordinance authorizing a franchise in favor of Paul's Party Boat to operate a tour boat business within the city limits of the city of Nagades, confirming the term of the franchise, conditions and consideration for said franchise, and authorizing the mayor to execute the said franchise agreement on behalf of the city, providing for advertising, further providing for separability, and further providing for a repealer and effective date of ordinance. And I think this was introduced, um, the April twenty-fourth meeting. And, um, this is. So I move for adoption of ordinance number zero-two-five, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, I think we all know Paul's Party Boat and what it means, what it adds to. We were talking to Arlene earlier about tourism, what it adds to tourism, uh, here in our community. Uh, I think Mr. Paul has been working for some time on a second boat, especially during the Christmas season. Uh, that's gonna make sure that he could serve everyone that he has. Bless your councilman.
Thank you.
Um, but again, he didn't even, uh, come tonight, I don't, we didn't anticipate, he and I talked and anticipated there would be any questions. But there may be some comments or questions, council, I'm not sure, so.
He does a good job.
He does.
Go again.
Think we said the three-year term, I think we said.
Yes, it's for, well, we're going back to November the first of two thousand and twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
And then it's gonna continue through October the thirty-first, thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-three with one additional, um, extension, which will be from November twenty-one to twenty-three through October thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay, I.
Any public comments or questions about this particular ordinance? Counsel, I did, you, you all were good with this, right?
Yeah.
Okay, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
P T.
Yes.
All right, uh, that motion carries. These next five items are on for introduction. Uh, the first one is read by Councilman Harrington.
This is ordinance number twenty-six of two thousand and twenty-three, an ordinance adopting the millage rate for the tax year two thousand and twenty-three. And be it ordained that the following millage are hereby levied on the two thousand and twenty-three tax roll on all properties subject to taxation by the city of Nagades. Public safety tax is ten mills, general alimony tax is seven-point-zero-three-zero mills, and the total millage is seventeen-point-zero-three-zero mills. And this for introduction only.
Okay, all right, um, Stacy, I think that this is just a.
Formality.
Formality. Do we do it every year, once a year? Around this time? What does this really mean?
So this is, I'll let Clarissa elaborate on this, but as far as it going on the agenda, we just have to go in and adopt the millage levying it again, saying nothing's changed. Because the assessment year is every four years, which will be next year, which will be German if you could roll forward. And I don't know if.
No, that's great explanation, this is related to the tax assessor, um, and the, um, millage that is, uh, that evaluates the property, assess the properties. So, uh, we would have opportunity next year to roll forward, um, but this year we do have to stay at the same level that we're at right now.
Okay.
All this has to be turned in to T L M at the tax assessor's office so they can do their.
So a routine step, no increase in any taxes.
Okay, I was gonna ask that question.
Oh, no, 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 no increase or possible increase if we all are in agreement on next year we have that opportunity, but this year, no, ma'am.
Okay. And I think I've seen, we've seen this every year since I've been a part of this process.
Right. And then if you do, if we have the opportunity according to the numbers to roll forward according to the assessment, it's a little bit more convoluted. But, you know, it's, it's, that's every four years.
Any comments or questions, council? All right, again, just for introduction, so we'll say it again at our next meeting for vote. Uh, next item, introduction, Councilman P T.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number zero-two-seven of two thousand and twenty-three, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Nagades to award the bid for a Digger Derrick truck for the city of Nagades Utility Department. Whereas resolution number zero-two-four of two thousand and twenty-three was passed by the Nagades City Council on March twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids for a Digger Derrick truck for the Nagades Utility Department. Whereas the bid was advertised in the Nagades Times on April eighth, April thirteenth, and April twentieth of two thousand and twenty-three in accordance with the law. Whereas one bid proposal was received, Altech Newco, at three-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand-five-hundred dollars. And this is for introduction.
Okay. All righty, um, Matt, you got something?
Yeah, Mayor, this is for a, uh, Digger Derrick truck that became available. Uh, we decided to purchase it, I believe we're gonna put a hundred thousand down on it and then, uh, pay out the rest. And this is available now, which is, uh, a lot different from what we've seen, like bucket truck we have just ordered that's two years out. This one is available now.
Okay. Digger truck, it's what you use.
Yeah, this is the truck we use, that's not a Digger truck, that's a bucket truck, but similar truck. Uh, it's one we use to set large poles and big transformers. We have one now, I think it's about seventeen years old, if I'm not mistaken, so we're replacing it.
So we just have one, and we're, we're keeping one?
Well, we have a small one and a big one.
Okay. All right. Comments, questions for Matt, council? All right, this is pretty, sounds pretty routine, stuff we have to do. So seventeen years, is that, how much life we typically get out of a Matt?
Yeah, the Digger truck is not like the Bucket Truck, it's not something we use every day, we, we use it weekly, but we don't use it daily. Uh, so, yeah, they tend to last a little bit longer than Bucket Trucks.
Okay.
That's for cutting the trees, you say?
No, that's for setting poles and hanging transformers on poles, and then setting the large pad mount transformers. And we use it other things around the city, at other departments from time to time. We set pumps with it for the water plant and, uh, some of our lift stations.
Okay, again, it'll be something up for vote on the twenty-second. All right, next item is read by Councilwoman Elarge Smith, again, these are just introduction.
Thank you, Mayor, ordinance number zero-two-eight of two thousand and twenty-three is an ordinance declaring certain buildings unsafe and recommending that same be demolished or put into repair to comply with the building code, authorizing notice to be served, fixing hearing date, and appointing curator to represent the absentees. Whereas the director of the planning and zoning and city building inspector have filed written reports with the city council declaring that the buildings listed below, and I'm gonna name those, it's fourteen buildings, are in a dangerous and unsanitary condition, which makes them unsafe and endangering the public welfare, and recommending that said buildings be demolished, uh, put into repair to comply with the building code. First from Clarence LaCass, Clarence and Ruth LaCass, nine-eleven Lake Street. Robert Murphy and Grant Shields, fourteen forty-eight Hill Avenue. McClauson Investments LLC, twenty-one oh-seven Eight Mile Loop. Cynthia B. Adams, care of Ola Bradley, eight-twelve Celine Street. H-Town Hospitality LLC. Oh, it's where to get the mayor, ma, mail, I suppose. This is located, I don't know where that's located at.
Seven-two-sixty-one.
Okay, I see, seventy-six twenty-four Highway One Bypass, okay. Next one is Sharon Freeman. Uh, fifteen oh-three Salter Street. Number seven, L V Samuels, which is located eight-seventeen Jordan Street. Property is located there. Zachary Rogers, property located at four-thirty-nine Carver Street. Property ten is Herman's, Herman Small, care of Calvin Murphy. The address is located at eight-thirty-seven Celine Street. O C and Lee Johnson, property located, um, fourteen forty-two Hill Avenue. Property eleven is Victor and Mava Kuti, property located thirteen sixteen Grace Avenue. Property number twelve is Rock Island, well, care of Rock Island Missionary Baptist Church. Property is located at twelve-twenty-one Ellis Street. Property number thirteen is Ophelia Johnson, care of Jack on Lewis. This property is located at twelve-fifteen Ellis Street. And Beverly Rasheal, last property being, uh, eleven-twenty-four Ellis Street. And this is for introduction only, and, um, for condemnation.
Chantrell had to leave early today, just wasn't feeling, feeling well. So, um, this is one that comes up, it, you don't, you won't see it again on the twenty-second, thirty days after it elapsed before you see it again. So we'll see it in one of our meetings in June, is how that works. But, um, we can certainly get her to send you, council, the pictures, cause we try to show the images. But she's the one that knows how to work the iPad with it and everything, and she just had to unfortunately leave a little early. So typically what happens is, and I've, I've seen her to go through this a little bit, somewhat as we did a ride around for about two to three hours one day of the city. And, um, they're not quick to condemn, is what I, what I get from it. I say they, she really has a CBO that takes a look at it. And, uh, you know, because a, a lot of the structures can be salvageable. And e- even this process doesn't mean the property's coming down, uh, necessarily. But, um, we just want to, you know, go ahead and start the process. Sometimes we have individuals who come and say, hey, well, we're gonna take care of it ourselves. We're gonna either bring it back, uh, and, and get it rehabbed and all of that, or, um, demolish it. So, but, but my whole point is to say, I think that there's thought to go in and to not just be so quick. Because there was actually a couple I thought, hey, can that come down? But then there are certain things that you're looking at with the structure of a property. So I just wanted to say that because I know everybody's not necessarily doing it day-to-day like I am. But that is something that I, that I, uh, look at. Now ordinarily, we don't, uh, allow something that's being introduced, but I do have a, a, a young lady that raised her hand. And so, uh, council, I will allow it under this circumstance, cause typically for introductions, we don't. But I know how, uh, condemnations in property can be. So ma'am, will you come forward, and Steve, when, you know, typically how we do it, um, you know, give it a three minutes. And, um, but we'll get you, ma'am, just like, uh, people do when they approach the microphone. You know, give it a three minutes and, but we'll get you, ma'am, just like people do when they approach the microphone, state their first and last name. I think we have another Councilman here to this, maybe there's another after that. So please state your first and last name. Steve is gonna give you three minutes.
I'm Jacqueline Lewis of property 1215 Ellis. Of myself and my aunt and my mom, we have custody of that property. Due to our grandmother and our mother, she left that property to us after she passed. So we have permits and stuff to have work done on that house.
Which property is that?
1203 Ellis Street.
Have you communicated the permit part to Chantrelle Rocket Planning and Zoning? That you are working to, to get the house? Yeah, I mean, I guess if you got a permit, you had to, you had to pull it through.
We're just in the process of doing that, the weather, and then we got bees trying to find out how to cover that. Paying, we didn't do nothing, none of the bees are, they're attacking.
So you have had conversations with Chantrelle before, right? Somebody, somebody had to have some type of conversation with planning and zoning? Okay. So again, she's not here so tonight, so it obviously, she knows more about the conversations that, that have been had and where the process is. But there's a reason why she put it on the condemnation list. So I'm assuming that, again, is it just an assumption that maybe the progress wasn't there? Okay.
Ma'am, what is the address again?
1215 Ellis
1215, okay. I didn't see 1215.
Okay, well, it's just, it's a follow up with Chantrelle from my standpoint. But your intentions are to do what?
Get it fixed.
Get it fixed. Somebody's gonna live in it.
Yes.
Okay. All right, that was a note. Council, I don't know if you have anything for them?
No, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
She's gonna be the one.
Ms. Chantrelle Rock.
And Mayor, Mayor, I, I get her, I get their numbers. I, I know that, that's the street I grew up on, so.
Okay. Gotcha.
Turner, Washington.
All right.
All right, appreciate that, Alex. Okay, all right, we got another, just like what they did, state your first and last name. You have three minutes and certainly tell us about the, the property, the, which property you're
My name is Bart, Bart Bogta from H-Town Hospitality of 7624 Highway Bypass 1. It's the Motel 6. Right, we, we've already spoken with Ms. Chantrelle and Nicole, they did two visits last week. I think they visited about 10 days ago. And as soon as they visited, they told us, we got the letter in the mail, we already got, she already has updated pictures of a lot of the work that's being done. I just wanted to thank the, uh, Council for letting me speak. Thank you, Mayor. I think from the various faces I've seen in the room here, we've been working with the fire department, things like that, making sure everything is up to date with everything that's been going on at the property. Other than that, I just wanted to let you guys know that we have been in contact with Ms. Chantrelle. We already have some paperwork submitted that she requested. She requested last week. I think that's about it, but thank you.
Okay, Council, y'all got any questions? Motel 6 on a bypass kind of across the street from Alliance Compressors, maybe?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the dealership.
So obviously, there were a couple of things that were concerning to Chantrelle, so. But like I said
And we're taking care of it now.
Okay. Council, you got anything? All right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for being here today, sir. Is there anybody else on a particular property? I know I'm sounding like a broken record, but just to remind you, state your first and last, sir, you have three minutes. And certainly tell us what's property as well.
Robert Murphy Senior. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I got a problem because I can't even remember the address of that, that piece of property, but it's on Jordan Street.
Uh huh. It's not Lake Street? No, it's Jordan Street. I see you.
Okay, oh, I've been working on that house. We got new windows and new doors and stuff. It never did have any holes or stuff in the walls or anything. The roof don't leak or anything like that. But during the process of all that, I started getting sick, so I thought I was gonna have one operation, end up having seven operations. So it's just been a slow process. But I have been working on it and I keep it clean around there. So I, I didn't understand why, you know, they were in a hurry for me because the houses next to me are empty and been empty over 20 years. I don't, I don't complain about those houses. Also, where the house, it's two houses on that piece of property. And we need to get the roof done on them, but there's a bunch of rotten trees on the lot next door. So the guy who wanted to, that's supposed to do my roof, he was wanting me to ask if, if I could see about somebody getting those trees cut before I put a new roof on them, and those trees keep falling over into the yard.
Where is that at? What, what's your name and where is he at? I'm sorry.
Robert Murphy Senior, I got
Oh, that's you, Robert.
Yeah. Yeah, I got a house on Jordan Street and one of them behind it on Martin Luther King. I'm working on both, I'm trying to work on both of them. But like I say, I put new doors and new windows and stuff in it. It never did have holes in the walls and stuff. I need to get some temporary service to help me along a little bit faster. But like I say, those operations that I had, I started having heart blood pressure, heart kidney and all this different stuff, so I'm working slow. But I am getting it done.
And look, what I would tell you, Mr. Murphy, have you come to see Chantrelle yet?
Not lately, no.
We need you to do that. The number is 318-357-3840, 357-3840. So I would call, schedule an appointment, go see her, shouldn't take too long. And she will be able to tell you some specific issues. And I hear you mentioned taking your time, so it's probably got a lot to do with it. She's, man, again, I hate to speak for her, but she's been seeing, and thank you for, Mrs. States for getting that to him. That's the number to plan in the zoning, okay? So I would call and get an appointment, sat with, sat with her, and just to know what are the issues. Like I said, my experience, they don't move hasty. They don't move very quick to condemn. It's, it's typically for a reason, so. But she's the one you would need to contact.
She'll give you some time to get it up and standard, good standing order, hopefully.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Robert Murphy. Okay, all right. Anybody else to speak on a, a potentially condemned home? Or structure? All right, moving on to the next. Again, those are just introduction, you won't see that on 22nd. It'll be in our meeting in June once 30 days have elapsed. The next item is for introduction, it's Councilman P T.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 030, amending the 2022, 2023 budget to reflect additional revenues and expenditures.
Okay. Anything in particular with that, Clarissa?
No, just to say that this is our routine budget amendment that we do each year as we approach the end of the fiscal year. The auditors and the state legislatures like for us to make sure that we are within 5% variance, whether good or bad, for revenues and expenses. So we try to go back and we right-size our budget to reflect any additional expenses or revenues that were brought in throughout the year. So this is just a routine budget amendment that we do at the end of each year.
Okay. All right, comments or questions about that, Council?
Yeah, you said, what about amendment to the budget now?
Yes, ma'am, so this is the routine amendment that we do to reflect any additional expenses or additional revenue that has come through within the year. The benchmark is that you are within 5% of your projections. So anytime that we see ourselves that are not, we may make an amendment to the budget to right-size it and get within those parameters. So this is just our routine amendment that we do each year.
Okay. And certainly if there are questions about that, please, Council, make sure you contact Clarissa, she can, but again, that's one that happens every year at this time. And then the, the last thing that's for introduction, Councilman Herantin.
This is Ordinance 31 of 2023, amending the 2022, 2023 budget for the Jefferson Street sinkhole. This is for introduction only.
Now, this one is specific.
Yes, sir. So this one, I'm pretty sure everybody's aware that we had the sinkhole on Jefferson Street that's cost us close to $400,000 to repair the property, reroute some of the drainage and things of that nature. So we had to go within our current budget and find that money within our utility department. So me and Matt worked together to see if there were areas within our current budget that we could go out and carve that money out of. It took us a little while to get to the point. We had to actually touch about 20 different line items. Just some encumbered balances that he had on his books that he knew that he could give up, you know, in efforts to cover the cost of the rehab to the sinkhole. So this is what that amendment is about.
Okay, yeah, and again, I think everybody knows that, what that is. Okay. All righty, again, those are just for introduction. All right, next two items are for resolution, the final items of, of the night. Resolution number 37, 2023, Councilman Nielsen.
Let me catch up with you.
Here.
Got it.
Resolution number 37 of 2023, a resolution levying an additional sales and use of 2% and an additional hotel occupancy tax of 2% in the Natchitoches Economic Development District F, State of Louisiana. The district designating the full amount of such newly levied additional sales and use tax and hotel occupancy taxes, the local sales and use tax and local hotel occupancy tax in the district from which the occupancy tax increments will be determined and used to finance economic development projects in accordance with and as authorized by Part 2, Chapter 27, Title 33 of the Louisiana Revised Statutes of 1950 as amended. And I move to adopt Resolution Number 37 of 2023.
Motion made in second, we've got Mr. Bosado who's here, who's been working on this one and works on a couple of the E D Ds for us. Maybe just about all of them, I don't know. But Mike, go ahead, sir.
I thought this was gonna be a long meeting. I'm glad we're finishing up. This is the Economic Development District that we've been working on for the Mill District. And this will, this is the final piece of it that will institute the tax that will be used for economic development. And one addition, one change to this is that we will, we do need an amendment to set an expiration of 15 years. And so we've got it set to start on October 1st of this year. And will expire unless renewed on September 30th of 2048. So we'll just need that amendment to it.
Of 20 what?
2048, check my math.
Well, you said 15, but that's 25.
That is 25, so, excuse me, 2038.
Okay.
I'll amend my motion to include the 15 year.
Second.
All right, motion made in second to include the 15 year maximum. All right, comments or questions, Council? Public comments or questions here?
I think in here, this is gonna include Texas Street, right? It's Texas Street also.
My name, Precious Barbara. I wanted to ask a question because I believe in include, like you say includes Texas Street. What businesses will be taxed, with emphasis, will Five Star Beauty Supply be taxed on this?
The what?
Five Star Beauty Supply, is that one of the businesses that will be taxed?
No, no, no.
Okay.
It's not, the beauty shop?
It's the Moffett owned property across the street from
Okay. So I did talk to a, a business owner that's in part of one of these districts. Because in the last meeting, we was told that everyone was for it. However, I just found out everyone is not for it. However, they're going to do it because they feel like the city got them in a chokehold. The word that was used was in a barrel. And so they say they're going to do it because they don't want to fight with the city. But I would like to put it on record that I have found out that they are not all for this.
Who, who are all that you're talking about?
The particular person that I'm talking about, but I will
Are they the Moffitts? Because this is, we only do it if a property owner requests, kind of requests, so.
I'm just telling you what someone just told me.
Well, they may not be, they're not in this district then.
Yes, they are. Yes, they are, because I asked them.
So they own the property?
They are in this district. And I'm gonna say that they just told me that they felt like they was in a barrel. I say, what do barrel mean? And they was like, well, you know, you just gotta do it because you don't want to fight with the city. So I said, okay, well, if you gonna let it be, then I ain't got nothing to say about it. But I just wanted to say that because I know in the last time we talked about this, we was told that everybody was for it. So that's the, that's the only statement that I had to make.
My name's Craig Anis. And if I had my way, I would suggest that everybody in Natchitoches boycott every one of these economic development districts. You're taking money out of the poor people's hands and handing it to a businessman. If they can't stand on their own two feet, let them fail. That is capitalism. You got serious problems in this city that you won't address. Crime, we're in the bottom 1% in the country. Infrastructure's falling apart. Education is terrible. I know you have very little to do with education. And taxes are too high. You raise taxes, you run people out of town. Very simple. Simple economics, simple capitalism. Look at it long term, not taking care of your friends. Have a good one.
What I'll say from my perspective that I've seen, we did one on River South Commons, we actually drew businesses, you know, which are creating jobs and adding to the tax base, of course. So it's an incentive tool that other cities are using to, to attract businesses to their community. And I think it's worked, it worked with Hobby Lobby, it worked with River South Commons, and I think it'll work in this instance as well. It worked in other places, in other areas as well.
And, and Mr. Mayor, too, just to, to make sure that we lay the groundwork properly. And the best example, too, I think, the, the most easy to point to is Hobby Lobby. Let me just give you an example here. There was a desire by residents to have a Hobby Lobby. Economic development officials and everybody reached out to Hobby Lobby and they said, look, Natchitoches doesn't meet our market requirements. There's not enough population, and so we can't come there. And city leaders said, well, we really want you, that's something that's very important to a lot of segments, especially because we've got Northwestern as well. And so they said, this is the problem. In order for us to come, we will not make a reasonable rate of return, our minimum reasonable rate of return based on the market. However, if you can help us fill that gap, we will come. And so the result was, yes, we will do a partial property tax abatement on just the property that is Hobby Lobby, not the outside property. So the, you're actually making money because those other two parcels are not part of it. And we'll do partial Economic Development District, again, just on Hobby Lobby, not on the other two parcels, and they're just temporary. As a result, Hobby Lobby said, our numbers will work. Those were all worked out to make sure that economic analysis was correct. You're actually generating significantly more revenue because of those out parcels that were built solely because of Hobby Lobby. And Hobby Lobby was the one that requested that. Now, some people, I understand, are philosophically against it. And so the reason, the, the impetus behind Economic Development Districts is, if you don't want to pay the extra tax, then you don't have to, you don't have to go to Hobby Lobby. It's an option. If you want a Hobby Lobby in Natchitoches, then you have the option to go there and you pay an extra tax. If you don't want a Hobby Lobby in Natchitoches
And just kind of speak, Mike, to that, with 1% most places, but since this has been split with Texas, you know, that's why we did it at 2%. But
It's a mix, I mean, it's a
1% on $20, what is that? What is that tax?
1% on, uh, 2 cents.
2 cents, $20. So
20 cents, excuse me.
What is it?
20 cents.
You know, I don't think it's 20. Is it 20? No, you're right, 20. It's 20. We got 20 cents.
And again, if, if, if you choose not to, but that's just the cost. If you want to have a Hobby Lobby, if you want to have certain things, you know, there is an extra tax for it. But the good thing is, is you're not required to pay that tax. If you don't want that extra service that you wouldn't have had, you don't have to pay it. You don't have to go.
And I think you need to speak to what area this affects.
Yes, so this is, the Mill District is just the, it's just the area right now that everybody's very familiar with. The only three businesses that are in there right now, or two businesses, is Flyhar Brewery. And I think it's the only operational business right now. The gentleman that spoke earlier that just bought property, they bought that property after we, after it was determined to make this an Economic Development District. They then went and bought the property. Correct me if I'm wrong. So it is already being an incentive. You already see people that are wanting to come. I know that we've talked about another business that now is looking at coming to that area. um, to fill a need that, that, on the entertainment side, so, um, but it's just that area right now. There's only one business in there, one on the way. Um, and then on the Texas Street, it's just two square blocks. Um, the, it only affects the individual business owner that requested it. And in return, he is going, he is committed to creating a certain number of jobs and a certain amount of capital investment. Um, and if he doesn't, then he's got the risk there, not the city.
Okay. Well, and, and as Precious is getting there, because I know somebody may have been here because they thought it affected somewhere else, but it's only those specific areas, a very specific area on Texas Street and what we call the Mill District, which is where Public Works is currently, Flying Heart Brewery is. It's only those specific areas for this particular E D D.
My name is Precious Barber. First thing I want to say is that I know what district that it does cover. And I, like I said, I just talked to someone and they said that. Now, the second thing I want to ask, when you say, uh, the district on Texas Street with Ms. Moffett, are you talking about the store that's going to affect that business? Is it the store right there? Or what is it?
There's a gas station there.
It's a gas station?
Mm-hmm. It's, it's some other things there, too. Checkers.
But, but it, it will affect the gas station, the store, correct?
The way it's written, yeah.
Okay. So, with the tax increase, that mean that, with personally, because I've worked for Ms. Moffett when I was a teenager. So, when you tax a place, that place also has to bring in revenue. So, does, does that mean that the customer, it could cause an increase in product, correct?
And tax-wise?
Yes, and tax-wise, it will cause an increase in product. And I know a lot of African-Americans that do it, go to this store. This is like one of the neighborhood stores. So, once again, this is why I'm asking this question is because when you raising taxes on business owners, even if they decide to do that, it still will increase product merchandise, which will cause the people who are in that area to be taxed. And just like I had a business owner to tell me, they say, well, Precious, it don't matter if it's 20 cent, 5 cent. When you go look at a gas station, it can be 3 cent on one side of the street and the other one is, uh, 3 cents lower. And the people still would choose to go to the other side of the street just to get gas. So, that's why I'm saying it does affect consumers. It will affect consumers. I know for a fact it will. So, I just wanted to say, once again, uh, I know what area you're talking about. And once again, I did ask someone and they just told me that, you know, it's like a barrel in a bucket. I said, okay, just like that. So, I just wanted to make sure that it's clarity that I do know what you're talking about.
Mr. Busada, say anything else?
Just want to thank us.
Okay. All right, I see your hand back there. Uh, you come forward, say your first and last name.
Mayor, let me comment, please.
Mm-hmm.
And clarify all this. I could be wrong. We did create a district on Texas Street, but we have added no taxation whatsoever as of today. This is only taxation on the Mill District that includes everything we, uh, purchased or donated by A D M. It includes the Carbecka property, which is the property Todd, Todd Oil was, and it includes L.S. Johnson wholesale. That's all. So, these taxes are only there. But, within that legislation, we can redirect 1% of the 2% sales tax to the Texas Street District to benefit them. We're not today taxing anything on Texas Street.
Good clarification, Randy. No, that, that's a good point, really good point. I think Mr. Patel has something. Say your first and last name. Steve, we got you.
Hi, my name is Franco Patel and I own the Relaxing Motel on Washington Street. Um, I just need clarification. I've been trying for a few days to find out what these redistricting, um, areas are for this economic, uh, development. Um, the 2% increase in hotel and motel tax, which models are included in that?
It doesn't, it doesn't impact you at all.
Okay.
Because you're not in the Mill District.
Okay, so, which hotels does this represent?
There are no hotels. So, maybe Mike can say exactly what that is. There are no hotels currently in the Mill District.
So, do you know where the brewery is? Are you familiar with the, the brewery is?
Yes, sir.
So, that area where those old cotton gin buildings are? This only includes that area. So, if a hotel goes there in five years, it will include that.
Kind of have to put that language in case.
Only in that area, nowhere else.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Mike, is there anything else?
No, that's it. And, and I will say one last thing, though, on the Texas Street piece. Part of the reason a lot of this came up is because there was a desire from the developers to bring more business into that area. And a lot of the national retailers said, look, there's not, we want to be by the interstate and you're having a disinvestment inside the city. And so, this was a way to say, look, we will incentivize you to come back in the city so that not everything is just by the interstate. So, that's really what this was about on the Texas Street side, on the Mill District side. It's just, again, creating, you know, a, a, a vibrant area.
Did we vote on that amendment?
Not yet.
We did?
We have a first and a second.
Okay, so, we, that's a 15-year maximum. What it is, we won't, won't go beyond 15 years is what we just voted, uh, we didn't vote yet, but...
No.
All right, uh, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote?
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
P T?
Yes.
All right, that amendment passes. Okay, any other discussion about the resolution itself? I think Busada has covered some things. Randy made a couple of good points. I think there's been some clarification.
So, to, to clarify, because I guess I was, I misunderstood as well. This 2% is only going to be collected in the Mill District, but what's collected there for sales is going to be used in a totally different district.
Half of it will be.
1%.
And that district's not collecting any extra to use...
Not at this point.
Not at this point. But, they will once, I mean, that, that is something that will be considered, um, if that's requested.
Well, then, if they request it and they get 2%, will 1% go back to the Mill District from theirs?
I, I can't answer that.
Well, you need a little bit more heavy lifting on Texas to kind of make, make it happen. It's really kind of what Mike alluded to.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that's, I mean, the, the intent is to, right now...
Support both.
When there was a talk about just doing it on Texas Street and leaving the Mill District piece out, and basically, the amount of revenue that that would generate was not nearly enough even to get, um, one national tenant into that area. And so, the thought was, is there any way that we can do joint economic development and really revitalize two places, um, you know, by working together? And so, that's really what it was about. And that was something that was talked to, um, presented to the business owners in the Mill District, um, to make sure that they were okay with that and got the support. And everybody came back and said, yes, this would be something, um, that's worth doing in order to make sure that we can, you know, build throughout the city.
So, have businesses on the Texas side been discussed with them also?
Yeah, and it's, right now, it's just on, and I can give you the street.
But, they're not paying any extra taxes. They're just receiving money.
Yeah, but, so, but they are aware of this, is what I'm saying.
Right, and basically, right now, the, the, the Texas Street, it just is the, um, it's Third Street. It's the, it's Third Street to Sabine Street to Dixie Street and then back to Texas Street. So, it's just, and, correct me if I'm wrong, is that right, Randy?
Well, the area that we designated...
On historic.
As the district, did it not match the expansion of the historic district? Uh, we didn't go out that far on the A D M. But, I think what Mike says is correct, then. I'm just thinking about the difference in the historic district boundary.
And basically, what, you know, anytime you have these additional taxes, I would say 85% of the time, it's because they've been requested by the businesses themselves because the businesses have basically said, look, without this, we, it's not economical. And so, if you'll do that and allow us to build up over a temporary period of time, we feel like we can then establish ourselves to get things moving, um, after that temporary period of time. And so, that's typically what happens.
And Mr. Smith, we, we had a conversation with the business owners dating back over a year, maybe a year and a half, discussing, um, creating a district and make sure the business could sustain itself by having additional funding. So, that was the plan behind the money being redirected from one to the other.
Any other questions, Council? All right, I don't know if we heard a motion on this one, did we?
We did.
We did? We got a second as well? All right, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote?
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
P T?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. All right, thank you, Mr. Busada. Last item on the agenda is a resolution by Councilman Harrington.
This is resolution 39 of 2023. I have it in title only, is there more to it? Only have a title.
What was it?
I don't have that.
Resolution 39, I only have the, I don't know if there's more to it, I only have a title.
39?
Let me see. Okay.
Oh, yeah, I don't have this, okay. Yep, I was, I knew there had to have been more. A resolution designating Friday, June 16th, 2023, as an official holiday for the employees of the City of Natchitoches and the observation of Juneteenth, whereas Juneteenth National Independence Day is a U.S. federal holiday signed into law by President Joe Biden on Thursday, June 17th, 2021, whereas in 2021, Governor John Bill Edward signed a bill making Juneteenth a legal state holiday. And whereas the new law designated the 3rd Saturday in June as Juneteenth Day, and whereas all state offices will be closed the Friday preceding that Saturday, and whereas Juneteenth is the oldest national celebrated commemoration of the ending of slavery in the United States, and whereas Major General Gordon Granger landed at Galveston, Texas with news that the war had ended and that the enslaved were now free. And whereas through the Emancipation Proclamation was signed into law and became official on January 1st, 1863, slaves in the state of Texas, also in Louisiana, had not heard the news until two and a half years later on June 19th, 1865. And whereas people celebrate Juneteenth by eating barbecue, shooting fireworks, gathering at a cookout, shopping at black-owned businesses, sharing history and sipping on red drinks, a tradition that symbolizes perseverance and honors the blood that was shed of African-Americans. And whereas Juneteenth is a day that should be recognized by all Americans and a day that reminds us of our incredible capacity to heal, hope, and emerge from the darkest moments with purpose and resolve. And whereas the mayor and the city of, mayor and Natchitoches City Council wish to declare Friday, June 16th, 2023 as if, an official city holiday, and now therefore be resolved by Mayor Ronnie Williams Jr. that Friday, June 16th, 2023, be declared an official holiday for the City of Natchitoches employees and the observation of Juneteenth. I move to adopt resolution 39 of 2023.
Second.
All right, um, a motion made and, uh, and seconded. The 16th, I think the state got it together this year, they're on the 16th as well. So, we're just honoring it, honoring that, honoring on that day as well, uh, to, so there won't be any, um, you know, that'd be a holiday for us if this passes. But, um, we do have some things I think we can say, uh, in just a moment in terms of how we're going to honor it. And so, really been a really good team put together, uh, to help to focus on, uh, some of these things. So, um, uh, really good proclamation, I think, Councilman Harrington. You want to add in the Louisiana part? And not just Texas, huh? All right?
I like that.
But, uh, but yeah, so, uh, good. So, any comments or questions, Council, about this?
I think it's good. We're, we're all created equal, we're all God's children, so...
Mm-hmm, it's good. Good, good. Any public comments or questions here? All right, seeing, uh, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote?
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
P T?
Yes.
All right, thank you for your patience tonight. We do encourage you to download the Go Natchitoches app. Uh, I'm sure what we got going on this Saturday, Friday, and Saturday is going to be, may already be on the app. Uh, of course, Regroup for Natural Disasters, we never know when they're going to happen, but we use it to communicate with you. Uh, Steve, to the next one. Uh, our former's market, I think everything's been going well, wasn't able to be at the one Saturday, but, um, I think it's been going really well. And, um, so, we're, we're back here again on the 13th, uh, for typically our 8 to 12, uh, what we do. So, they have a theme every week. And so, really Randy and folks under his department are doing great with that. Got the next one coming up on the 20th, get physical at the market. So, it looks like they're going to be exercise opportunities. What else you got there, Steve? All right, Jazz Fest is coming up, the Natchitoches Jazz and R and B Fest. Um, I think we've got a lot of folks who've purchased tickets. We're going to have a lot of people in town. Um, it's going to be really amazing. Tracy Byrd, Mark Chestnut, going to be your headliners. But, I know they got Cupid coming, I heard about him. Um, they also giving a night to Elton John, right? Somebody's going to be impersonating Elton John like they did one year before, somebody else, I think it was. Yes.
Performing all of his songs.
So, it's going to be Elton John and Prince. That's going to be Friday night, right? Elton John and Prince Friday night. So, a lot of things going on this weekend with the Jazz and R and B Fest. You want to make sure you're there. Still time to purchase your ticket, I believe. It's still time, Randy, to get your ticket?
Uh, you can, actually, you can get online on the website and, uh, do pretty much everything now because the way it's set up at the entrance, you can have three booths. You're going to have will call where you could pick up your tickets previously, purchase your armbands. You will have a credit booth and a cash booth, so that it makes everything flow quicker. Only one entry point at the north side of the amphitheater and front exchange bank.